Okay. I'd like to call to order the Douglasoni Board of Appeals meeting for April 10th at 7:05 PM. Mr. Bombard, Mr. Holland, Mrs. Holmes have excused absence. The first agenda item is a discussion with North Brown LLC and update on North Village.
If I sit?
No, go right ahead.
You know, Holland's a lawyer, you should have sat here. No, that's where he sits, you're right. You're right.
It's a lawyer's seat. Keeps you honest, we have a little button, you can shock him.
No, it makes you disappear.
So, yeah, just an update as to where we are. I provided the board with a letter last week, which I think Maria was sending to everyone in terms of what we thought we were and issues that we'd identified. As I think Tim had mentioned the last time, the cistern is in the ground and full of water. We are on schedule to complete the piping and the access this month, assuming we don't get two feet of snow from the storm in the Midwest, but there's no look if it's coming. So, in terms of the unit sales and construction, we have all of the units in Phase One have either been sold or are under agreement, and that includes the seven affordables that are in Phase One. We've sold three of them. We have two sales that are pending within the next week to 10 days, and the other two are under agreement to close when the units are done, which will probably be late May, June, probably June. So, I apologize for missing the last meeting, I had some back surgery, so wasn't able to be here. I did look at the videotape, seemed to be concern about the pace that was happening in terms of the written amendment to the comprehensive permit. So, in order to address those concerns, we had requested a meeting with Bill and Jay and Dan and some other town officials that we met earlier in the month to discuss the issues. What came from that was a request for a couple of things. An update of the edits to the amendment that Jay had prepared back some time ago that we had been discussing. I was under the impression that we had come to an understanding that until we had all of the possible changes that might affect us, that we'd wait to do the written amendment until then, but in any event. So, we discussed that and also the plans showing the units. And so, we provided both of those to Jay and to Bill. I've had some conversation with Jay. We met with Bill yesterday, went over the plans. So, that's where we are. In terms of the sales, what we'd like to resolve tonight is a plan for going forward in terms of the sales, in terms of the unit sales and the market rate sales. We have, as I said, we have two affordable sales that will be numbers four and five coming up, but in the meantime, we've had to delay a couple of sales of market rate units until we get the number, the affordable sales. And so, those are ready to close, and I think one of the potential buyers is here tonight, and so they would like to close, I'm sure, as soon as possible, and we would like to be able to do that as soon as possible. So, like to discuss that issue with the board. An issue came up when we had the meeting with Jay and you, Dan, and Bill, in terms of what had been agreed to and voted in terms of the changing the ratio from four to 16 to five to 20. So, there's that. But again, we are close to having sales on the next two units and certainly, you know, at least one within the next week. So, just those are the issues I think we need to discuss.
Affordable in the next week?
The two, we have two affordables right now that are scheduled to close on the 19th.
Okay.
So, but again, we have two market rates that are ready to close as soon as possible, that were ready to close, you know, a week ago. So, if we can do something in order to do those, that would be appreciated.
Jay, do you want to join us?
So, my, some of the discussion was, there's some confusion in the eyes of the board as to, and Ed and I talked about this, and you and I talked about this, Dan, you went back and looked at the tape. The original requirement, kind of as amended, was four out of 16 sales would be affordable.
Sales.
Sales. And then, the request by Ed was five out of 20 occupancy permits. And I didn't review the tape, but you had mentioned that you reviewed the tape.
I did, and I asked Pam, but she's at another meeting. Did you have a chance to review it, Mike?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So, I don't know ultimately what exactly was said, but there's some indication that that was the vote, despite the fact that there may have been some confusion perhaps over what they were thinking. Then, when we had the meeting, Ed was thinking, well, let's go back it down to four out of 16, because maybe we can get there with that on the sale side, you know, because they're always, it's kind of jumping forward or jumping back.
Right.
So, the conversation I had with Ed yesterday is, tell us what you want and what you need, and we'll see where we were and kind of see where we can get you. So, there's a possibility, because I think you indicated in our communication that, okay, that vote was with respect to Phase One, and then we'd go back to four out of 16 sales. Was kind of your understanding of what?
Yeah, I watched the tape, and that's exactly what was said.
Okay. So, if that's the case, then I think there's two ways probably to approach the current, well, three ways to approach the current request. You could say no, if you want, and take that hard line, or you could say, okay, well, let's change that, because I think four out of 16 sales gets you there, right? Because then you're into the next phase.
Right, right.
So, you could kind of spot amend that. So, I've held off editing, Ed and I talked, I've held off editing what he provided in this draft here until, what are we doing? Let's not do it twice. So, that's one way to do it, is to kind of back it down, in which case, they're already where they need to be, and then we're just four out of 16 the rest of the way. Or, you could keep it to the five of 20 and give them the relief in that they appear to be close, that you said you have PNSs.
Well, again, if the interpretation is five out of 20 occupancy permits.
Then you're there.
We're there.
That's right, so that's a fourth approach.
Because we've had, as of today, we had the final inspection on our fifth affordable, and just waiting for Bill to sign off on that, and so then we have the five of the 20.
Right, so they may already be in compliance if you conclude that, hey, well, you know, whether we, it was fresh in our minds, that's what we did vote, and it is five out of 20 occupancies. So, they'd be there in compliance, or they'd be there in compliance with four out of 16 sales, or they would require a little bit of leeway from you if it's five out of 20 sales, and you'd say, okay, that is our requirement, but we're going to grant you kind of a waiver on, because you're making progress here. So, those are the ways you could go that get them there.
Mm-hmm.
If you, and, right? I mean, those are three ways to do it if we want to do this. Obviously, there's been some progress, obviously, there's still been some issues on all fronts, and we continue to work on those issues, jockey a little bit, have some, what I'd call, good nature debate from time to time on those issues. But in terms of your role on the sales, that's kind of where we are. And then, we can kind of back into a document that kind of puts us exactly where we are so that they'll have a roadmap going forward, potential buyers will have a roadmap going forward. I think we also in this, we're kind of locking in the kind of plans of record.
Mm-hmm.
That was the other important thing about this amendment, is there's some small locations that have changed in this, and I think it's important to lock that in for them, for banks, for everyone on that. So, that was kind of the other benefit of that. But I think the issue du jour is kind of, where are we on this, and what are your feelings? I didn't watch the tape, so I kind of defer to you and the crew. Mike said he looked at it, too.
Yep.
So, I don't know what he saw or what he heard at that time.
The discussion took about 50 minutes, and by the end of the discussion, it was clear, if you want, to me it was anyways, that everybody was pretty confused as to what they were doing. I made the motion, Pam second, and the three of us voted on it. I was thinking that I was voting on sales and not occupancies. Looking at where they're at now, the five out of 20 really hurts them more than it helped them. I didn't think about the ratio back at that point, but if you go back to the original, four out of 16 sales, and it helps them get to where they are now, and they can move forward, and it makes logical sense just to go back to that.
Yeah, I mean, we're fine with that. The only advantage of the five of 20 occupancies is it would allow us to move forward immediately with the sales of the two market rate units, and I don't know how quickly we can pull those together. In practice, it may be a few days.
Why wouldn't a four out of 16 allow you, because you'd be in the next phase?
Because we have to wait until the fourth sale, which won't happen until next Friday.
Oh, okay, because you're three in.
So, we're losing a week, basically, is what. And again, we have, you know, so that's the issue.
From my own point of view, they have one that's going to close on the 19th, affordable. You got one on the 26th, not two on the 19th, there's one like it is.
Well, yeah, but that was last week. Now?
And within two weeks' time, they're going to have five out of the 20 anyways. They're going to be over their four that they need to be four out of 16. I would have no issue personally to allow them to close the two on the 12th. They're going to close the other two affordables anyways within this month. They achieve everything, and we go back to the four.
Is that second affordable that's out there on target for that?
Yeah, the second affordable, they wanted to move it up to the 19th, so we're looking.
So, that's the fourth, and the fifth is when?
The fourth and the fifth, hopefully, we're trying to do them both on the 19th. That was the schedule we had last week, and again, things change.
But you think one of those may not make the 19th?
One of them may not. I mean, it's, you know, you still got DHCD, you know, the final documents and all that stuff, and so.
But it still puts you at four.
It still puts us at four.
So, if we go back to the original, four out of 16, you've reached your goal that you need to reach.
That five out of 20 actually hurt you. But the four out of 16 would still require a little bit of a dispensation for you to on those two.
If we could close the other two before next Friday.
Right, because you're above the 16 at that point, right?
Right, right.
Wouldn't you do them all on the same day?
Ideally, we could.
You would love to.
But, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, then you get your affordable, and then you get your market rates, and.
But those market rates, there are people's schedules on the 12th.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a question of when the occupancy permits were issued. If, you know, if Bill says, well, I'm not going to sign off on the occupancy permits till I know that the affordable is closed, then it would be difficult to do them all on the same day, I think. Again, if we can get occupancy permits on the two market rates and the affordables, we've got, we have an occupancy permit on one of the affordables already. The other occupancy permit should be issued tomorrow, I think.
And again, what the board directs.
So, the technical issues are resolved, all the infrastructure issues on?
Yeah, I'm satisfied, and we're moving forward with the documentation. We had a good meeting yesterday, so I think we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, so it's just this issue that you need to sign off?
This is the issue I'm looking for direction from the board on.
Okay. So, all the inspections have been completed on the two affordables and on the two market rate?
Yeah, the two market rate, we have occupancies on both of them.
We have occupancy on the two market rates and one of the affordables.
And one affordable.
The second affordable has had all its inspections done.
We're just waiting for sign off for the bill inspection.
There wouldn't be any need to change anything if we could get them all done the same day.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, again, yeah, if, yeah, if we can get occupancy.
If you're on the, well, if you feel that the motion was five out of 20 occupancy, regardless of whether people kind of got confused using the terms back and forth, then it's kind of an academic discussion.
Well, but we can, I mean, we can always withdraw the request for the change.
Right, right, I get that, but then you would need a special dispensation by the board to kind of waive that requirement.
And however they would want to do that.
Either way, it's important, Dan, that we know your preference, if you want to get them where they need to go with, over the next couple of weeks. So, I mean, I don't have a quarrel with it. Anyway, I mean, I'm pleased, we had been concerned, as you know, for a while that, about getting the affordable stuff going, because we know that it's hard, even though we think of this as being a robust market for affordable units, the amount of restrictions that are attached to these affordable units make it hard to sell them. I'm sure you guys know that by now, so we had been worried about that. Now, it appears that they're doing pretty good on the marketing side of the affordable units, so I, you know, I'm kind of, I feel better personally, not that I'm a policymaker of where they are in that kind of progress. As someone who kind of looks for mechanisms to safeguard or to leverage the sale of those affordable units, there's less of a reason for me to suggest necessarily that you have to play hardball. That being said, you guys have your permit.
I don't think we've been.
Oh, you guys admitting, no, no, right, I'm just saying that there are permits out there where I represent towns, where it's a death by a thousand cuts, and we're constantly chasing after the affordable units. You guys have been.
Five or six months ago, they only had one with no prospects.
Right.
So, obviously, they're doing something, something right to the push them to get them sold.
So, and again, you don't have to take any action at all if you and Mike feel that the vote on that day was about occupancy permits. Otherwise, if you want to go back to the four out of 16 sales, then the question before you is, would you grant a little acceleration for them?
I would prefer to do that. Go back to the original agreement, just leave it alone. It's way too confusing at this point.
And then grant them the waiver of that requirement for the one, for the one unit.
They have two units on the 12th.
Right, but they need, there are three affordable units in, so they need at least one of those.
Right, but, yeah, but, no, 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 if we go to.
If you go back to four out of 16 sales, you're one short.
We need one, and we need the waiver.
But they have the two market rate sales before that one, so you, that's.
And that's what I said.
Yeah, that's the relief.
Give them relief on those two market rates so they can get past that.
Correct.
And the 19th, which is nine days from today, they're going to close on, hopefully, that's the one that you're talking about, close on the fourth affordable, and then they're out of the woods again until they get up to 24 units or whatever, whatever the case may be. But if the pace stays the same it is, you should have.
Yeah, as I say, we have.
Got a lot to achieve in that.
We've got all the affordables in Phase One sold, so that's seven, and we think we've got, the eighth one has gone through the initial.
Process.
Process.
So, you're really, you've got a lot under agreement now, so there's every confidence that in the next phase of 16, you're going to be right there.
We'll be fine. We're not, yeah, we don't anticipate a problem in Phase Two.
And that would follow through the whole project?
Yeah.
Back to the 14, the four out of 16 sales, and we just give them relief on these two.
Yeah.
All right. But we need to, at some point, clarify that, because it was definitely with sales, this is what I voted on.
I know, well, that's what we're clarifying.
Thought on occupancy permits.
So, in other words, then, what, if that's the way you want to go, then vote that, that it's back to the four out of 16, they're waiving it, provided that there is some relief to let those market rate units go over the 16 while they're waiting for the extra week. And I will write that up with Ed, and then you can sign it.
Unit 14 and 15.
Yeah.
So, just so I'll play, so that you have two affordables that you're going to close on, one in the next week and another one sometime in the.
Well, hopefully, we can close them both on the 19th, but who knows?
This month.
Yeah.
It's fair to say this month.
Yes.
And I'll make a note of that, that that's the expectation, so that.
If it was three months separation, I'd have an issue with it, but two weeks.
Right, right. So, you should have, you have four sales in the next, hopefully, this month.
We'll have five sales by this month.
Five sales.
Okay.
No, it was never, I don't think it was ever our goal to hold them up, we're just trying to have some kind of uniformity.
Which is great. I mean, again, anecdotally, I do a lot of 40B work, and projects are behind on their affordable sales. It's just, it's not an easy market despite the need.
You got to get Tim's sales tips and pass them along.
Proprietary by Tim, so, whatever it is. I mean, you got, your lottery agent tapped into something, right? So, or your marketing tapped into something that got you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, it was a lot of, it was advertising, it was follow-through, it was getting the right people, you know? I mean, a lot of our sales apparently came just through the MLS anyways.
That's great.
And so, but that's, yeah. Dan probably has a better feel than we do.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Bill?
Just a question for counsel. I know the Board of Selectmen voted and, you know, on the amendment to the amended MOU, which includes some of these provisions, so does further action need to be taken with regard to that?
I think it should probably get cleaned up at least by a letter. Again, we're going back to something that, even though it ends up that it's not more restrictive, the original one was more restrictive. The reason they came for five out of 20 was at the time, they thought they needed the relief from the five out of 20.
I understand, but.
But yeah, it should get cleaned up at least in some kind of writing, in some way, shape, or form. I don't think it's, because this is the operable permit as to how you are measuring your.
I'm satisfied with viewing this, that the ZBA hasn't fully processed the amendment to the amended MOU, so therefore, it's not implemented, but I think they have to.
But let there be no mistake, that the zoning board permit, even though it's incorporated provisions of the MOU, supersedes the MOU on these issues. So, the fact that the selectmen may have something on paper that says something different as far as the measuring sticks for occupancy permits, which you have to sign off on, the instrument that you look to is the permit.
The amended MOU with the selectmen dealt primarily with the fire cistern. That's all, I don't think it really.
It didn't include the language.
No, it doesn't include anything about.
I thought there was a reference to it in that, in those discussions, too.
There was some reference to building permits and occupancy permits in Phase Two until the cisterns, but it doesn't, it doesn't impact Phase One at all, so I don't think it's relevant.
Regardless, I think this is the master permit that you look to when you're looking at checking all the boxes to then go to the Building Commissioner and say, we're greenlighted here.
Sure.
So.
Before we take any action, this, would it be a good time to discuss the Section Because this is written.
That's what this is.
That's what we're going to be changing, so we're going to be, he's going to be withdrawing that, and we're sticking with it. I'll note some history, and we'll, so it's going to look like a little bit like ping pong, but.
Right, but this refers to occupancy permits.
Right, but we're going.
All the change, but we're going back to the original.
He's already made the request to kind of back off of that and waive that and come back to the four 16.
That's why I just want to make sure it's clear, because that night was.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so, but that's going to be all water under the bridge, because what you're going to do is return to four out of 16 sales with the dispensation that you're giving them tonight on getting those extra market rate units while we're waiting the week for the fourth affordable. Then they'll be back on track with their four out of 16 sales. So, this language, we can more or less ignore, and Ed will, and I will track that, we'll prepare it for your signature based on the, what I think Mike's going to take, and we'll.
I just want to be clear, because that night was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think the letter that I prepared, I think spells it out in terms of what, because that night, we had requested two changes. One was the pace of the sales, and the other one was to approve the amended MOU, which got done, and we don't want to change that, we just want to change the pace of sales. So, I did a letter that I think lays that out, and again, it doesn't, you know, as long as, as long as we get the waiver on the two, that I'm fine with submitting the letter.
Lou, anything?
I think it's okay, I just don't know, you know, like he says, you know, Jay knows what he's doing, and he's supposed to know what he's doing. But I know Jay knows, and Jay seems nothing wrong with it. What do you say, Jay?
You know, again, I think it's been, again, we've been at this a long time, and I'm not going to say that there haven't been bumps in the road on a number of issues, but I have to give these guys credit for stepping up on the affordable units. That's why, that's the trade-off that we get for these 40Bs.
Yeah, I understand that.
We're going to have potentially eight affordable units in this calendar year, potentially. That's outstanding. Given my experience on how hard it is to take care of that part of these developments.
It's hard.
It is hard.
You want all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted, it's a different lifestyle.
And your board has done a good job in giving relief, and so there's been a lot of give and take, back and forth. Bill has worked on a lot of issues with them, and I think there's a good understanding now on the flow of inspections and what's expected. So, there's been really good progress. Again, not without some frowns here and there on all parts, but it happened. I mean, you're in this business, Dan's in this business, it happens, so. But I think the board's been good, selectmen have been working with them. The level of communication has certainly been pretty good lately.
Wait a minute, want to make the motion?
So, make a motion to, would it be amend?
Well, you want me to frame it out?
Sure, you frame it out.
So, based upon Ed's letter of today is, make a motion to return to the four out of 16 sales standard, to amend, to issue the amendment accordingly, but to provide temporary relief from the four out of 16 so that they can close on the sale of.
Of 14 and 15.
Yeah, the 14th and 15th market rate unit while we're waiting.
Unit 14 and 15.
Yeah, unit 14, 15, while we're waiting for the imminent sale of the fourth affordable unit.
So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, second by Mr. Tosino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Good, all right, so I'm going to write it up, I'll get it to you and to Dan, we'll get the language just right, and Dan can sign it on behalf of the board, and we'll be off and running.
Is there any other things with the cisterns left, I mean, I know we asked about Tim's thing, you're a few weeks out.
Yeah.
Still the case?
Yeah, well, we hope to have it done by May 1st, you know, if the weather's good. We just need to do the piping and the paper.
So, we'll get an update next month.
So, I think, yeah, next month, we can give you an update, and we can, yeah.
Hopefully, they complete.
Tie up any of this, yeah, great.
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I don't talk to you, trip down, drive up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Is it closed?
No, we have one other.
Don't rush on.
Just because?
Yep.
We also had a request from Mr. Stevens, wanted to meet with the board.
Yes, Sarah's getting.
Yes, Sarah's getting forms together from you. She saw a couple of inconsistencies and she's due to some draft.
Okay.
Lou, how are you?
Fantastic. How's everything, though?
It's good. Busy.
You got everything? Of course it's busy.
Town meeting season, so it's busy.
Well, yeah. It's going to drive you crazy. You know.
crazier.
Yeah. And everyone's going to say that you said this and you said that.
As long as they go with what I said.
That's right.
I'm not sure what you have in mind. I mean, we, we need to get.
Good.
No, 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 no.
Application.
No, 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 not officially. It's just briefly. I, I just wanted, that's why, it's just informational. Um, so I want to, again, this is not part of the application, but it's just informational. Um, what it is, is, uh, the current property sits, um, between basically seventeen feet, uh, and twenty-four feet from the road. I'm looking to basically remove, remove the prop, remove that current house, which is, that's what the current house is, and try to put in another footprint and try to actually reduce, which is seventeen, I measured about twenty-four feet, but basically, you know, proposing to move the house back farther off the road, um, another five feet or so like that. And so I haven't dealt with this before. Um, and that's why I'm bringing it before you guys.
Have you met with the building commissioner?
Yeah, I met with the building commissioner. He asked, he actually asked me to put together something to give you, you know, for informational discussion because, um, right now I'm just, I'll, I'll take off what the, you know, I'm going to pull together a plan of, of how far we are from the wetlands as well as how far we are in front and do a, a sketch from that. But I wasn't sure, um, if, if the current footprint is showing twenty-four feet and I move it back to thirty feet, I still got to come before you for a variance?
Yeah, you're less than.
Yeah, less than, less than the fifty and stuff like that.
Right.
That's why I was, what I was declaring and stuff like that. So, um, and then if I'm bringing it back or, you know, actually improving the setback, um, but I changed the footprint of, you know, instead of, it's, the house currently, right now is, um, shotgun style lengthways.
Mm-hmm.
And then turning it that way. So if I maintain the, the current footprint, but just turn it instead.
I mean, that, that's something that would be in a file.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, in a file.
You want a file?
Forward.
Okay.
So it's, we really can't act on anything unless.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't going to act on anything. I was just really informational because I wasn't sure.
I don't even know if we're supposed to advise on that.
No, and I thought we are.
I would think that would go to the building department first.
Okay. So it still has to come before you guys for a variance, even though.
Right. We need a letter of denial from the building commissioner saying.
For you guys? Okay.
That you applied for this, you can't issue it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure, um, if it needed the variance. That's why I couldn't before you guys. If it needed the variance because it's already at twenty-four and I'm approving it. But to your point, so need a variance because we don't meet the fifty.
Right. Okay.
Something new. Uncharted territory.
I understand.
You know, so that's why I was, it's out.
All right. We'll see you in a month or so?
Month or so. Yeah. We're going to just do the copy and things like that. So appreciate you.
Fair enough. Thanks.